Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's East Hempel Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. East Hempel Township public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure outlined online for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on a non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed towards the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item, and I would ask that you would join me and rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of very routine items that typically require a very little debate or discussion from the board. Looking over the consent agenda, are there any questions or comments from board members?
No.
No?
None.
None.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F as presented?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item G, the minutes, as presented?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to give that to Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Chair abstained, as I was not present for that meeting. Thank you. Up next, we have action items, 3,000 Hempland Road Sketch Plan.
Can you hear me? It's good, perfect. Good evening, my name is Matt Kierst with Bowler Engineering, representing Mr. Carwash as the applicant. We're here tonight seeking your approval for preliminary, a waiver from preliminary plan requirements. We have met with the planning commission and received their recommendation to grant this waiver, as well as a letter from township engineer, granting, approving their recommendation as well, to grant this waiver. It is noted as well, we have submitted a land development application for final land development. We received the township engineer's review letter today. We had a conversation with him, and those comments will be, will comply. As you can see, there's a high-level background of the project. It's the 3,000 Hempland Road, the Bob Evans that was there previously. We would be proposing to tear that down and replace it with a state-of-the-art car wash that's about 4,700 square feet. It would have 11 vacuum stalls and three pay lanes. You would come through the northern entrance off of Hempland Road. The southern entrance that's there today will be removed as part of the, a part of the land development application, and as shown per our sketch plan. You would circulate through the pay stations, right where the cursor is, you'd enter the tunnel, and then you would exit the tunnel, where you can travel to the, one of the 11 vacuum stalls, or you can make a right and exit out onto Hempland Road. And as a note, we will be back for final land development approval, but tonight seeking your approval for the waiver.
Are there any questions from the board on this?
Maybe just for Nate, have they, we had all those right-of-way issues and everything during the Centerville Road projects, is, is there going to be a cleanup with this land development plan, some of those issues?
Yeah, I believe one of the comments on DMA's letter was to get the survey information we needed to finalize that.
Okay, thank you.
And a question, just a general question. It says, "On behalf of Carwash Partners," do you have other car washes in the area? Is this a chain-type thing?
Peter's on the line as well with Mr. Carwash, he's the applicant. I, I'll let him speak to the entity name, but my understanding, it's one entity.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Yes, the Carwash Partners is just kind of a, just a nomenclature. Our actual business entity out in Pennsylvania is CWP West LLC. Carwash Partners is just another way of saying Mr. Carwash as a, as the applicant. It's the only, only company in the country.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the only concern I might have is, are we rushing, are we rushing this along? I mean, I'm, I'm hearing that, first of all, we don't have DMA's letter in our packet. I'm also concerned about the right-of-way issue that we haven't looked into that, and we're going, so is there a need to move ahead with the plan before we have all these issues resolved? I guess that's my concern.
So the DMA letter from September 9th is the, that's the letter you don't have? Or today's letter for the land development application?
I have, I have the, I have that letter, yes. I have the five-page letter, land development application.
DMA did give their recommendation to approve the waiver request. I believe your packet was a carryover from the planning commission meeting when we didn't have their letter yet. They initially submitted a preliminary final plan, not understanding our procedures for this, so we had them submit the sketch plan to clean up the waiver request.
And I would just say, Mr. Bennett, the preliminary waiver is not out of the ordinary, that's, that's kind of, yeah. They still have to meet all the requirements with the final plan, and, and really, the onus is, is on them if they do not.
And you assure us that you will?
I'm sorry.
Well, they're going to be coming before us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to come back, but based upon the review letter we received today, we tend to comply with all those comments.
Okay.
Yeah, we're aware of the right-of-way and everything, it'll be addressed.
Yeah, that's a good, a question then from my own learning. When, like what criteria would we use to not waive the preliminary?
If you, a lot of times of residential development, where they're going to face the development, is it usually typically where you do preliminary and then final? That's, that's what it was actually designed for. So what would happen is a developer submits an overall plan, and then he might be building parts of it at that time, and he would submit an overall preliminary plan, and then he would submit individual final land development plans that build what was approved in the preliminary plan.
Thank you.
So, I myself didn't have any questions or concerns, and we'll turn it over to the audience at this point. Are there any questions or comments, concerns from the audience in regards to this? Hearing none, are there any on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Okay. So before us, this is relatively routine, and they will be coming back before us with a final plan, in which they're going to have to meet all of the criteria that, that's outlined. So with that, is there a motion to approve the preliminary plan waiver request for the 3,000 Hempland Road project township file 251502, subject to staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, up next, we have a sad item of business. It's a recognition for Elam Hur, who recently passed away, and one of the most dedicated residents in our township's history. And at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Russell if, if he would go ahead and read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is resolution number 25, 2025-23. A resolution honoring the life and service of Elam Hur for his 47 years of dedicated service to East Hempel Township Zoning Hearing Board, and his commitment to community service. Whereas Elam Hur of Landisville, Pennsylvania, gave almost 47 years of faithful and dedicated service as a member of the East Hempel Township Zoning Hearing Board, serving as chairman since 1984. And whereas Elam Hur devoted his time, talents to preserving the integrity of the township zoning ordinance, applying his sound judgment and thoughtful consideration to matters of importance to residents, businesses, and the township as a whole. And whereas through his decades of service, he would provide guidance and wisdom that ensured fair and balanced decisions, contributing greatly to the stability, growth, and quality of life in East Hempel Township. And whereas, in addition to his long tenure as a zoning hearing board, Elam also gave generously of his time through the service on the Amos Her Foundation, furthering the mission of preserving community heritage and fostering connections among residents. And whereas Elam Hur was known not only for his public service, but also for his kindness, laughter, and storytelling that touched all who knew him, leaving behind a legacy of warmth and fellowship that extended far beyond his official roles. And whereas Elam Hur passed away on September 2nd, 2025, at the age of 73, is remembered with respect, gratitude, and affection by his family, friends, neighbors, and the entire East Hempel Township community. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Supervisors of East Hempel Township, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, does hereby recognize and honor the life and service of Elam Hur, and expresses its deepest appreciation for his 47 years of dedicated service to the zoning hearing board, and his contributions to Amos Her Foundation. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the permanent records of the township, as a testament to his life service, and in copy be presented to his family with heartfelt sympathy and gratitude. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 25, 2025-23.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Russell, and second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd also like to add, there's been discussion with various people to do something in addition to remember Elam Hur. So I, I think, you know, there's nothing definite, and there's probably a lot of people with a lot of ideas. So I was talking to Cindy and Diane, there was a suggestion to, like, just submit ideas to them, and they'll pool them, and it will determine how to, in addition, remember Elam Hur.
Okay, thank you.
And for anybody that's available, the funeral is going to be this Saturday. The viewing starts at 10 o'clock, and let me just get the exact, 10 o'clock, and it's going to be at the Charles Snyder Funeral Home in Litts, and the service itself is going to be at 12 o'clock noon.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to make a comment in reference to Elam's Is there anyone online that wanted to make a comment?
Not that I've heard from.
Okay, up next, we have, our next agenda item is the minimum municipal obligation. Ms. White, sir?
So this is an annual thing that the township has to do by the end of September. It tells the state what our minimum obligation is for pension plans. In 2025, we were obligated to pay $904,805. In 2026, that number has grown to $932,769, sorry. There is state aid that offsets that, so the net cost to the township for 2026 will be $265,865. That is a slight increase over 2025.
Are there any questions from the board on this?
No.
We've had a lot worse than this one.
Yes.
Do you, you might not know this, and I'm sorry to put you in the spot, but do you know what rate now with that MMO, where percent funded is?
The non-uniform is fully funded because it's a closed plan. The police pension plan, I would have to double check.
That's fine. It'll also be something we could talk about during budget.
Correct. But it's definitely over at the 80%.
That's good, that's where it should be.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this matter? Any from Zoom? Okay. All right. Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize the signature on the 2026 minimum municipal pension obligation for all township pension plan funding?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five to zero, thank you. 5K fundraiser for kids' chance of PA on November 8th.
So the Eastern Alliance Insurance Group has hosted a kids' chance of PA 5K on the county Spooky Nook Trail for the last several years. The trail use is provided by Lancaster County Parks, and that approval is in process. What they have requested from you and is before you this evening is approval for the utilization of traffic control at the crossing of the trail on Spooky Nook Road. While there is a crosswalk signal there, we do recommend to them that they utilize fire, police, or other traffic control for this. And so, staff would recommend that the board approve the Eastern Alliance Insurance Group's application to utilize and provide traffic control on Spooky Nook Road for their 5K on Saturday, November 8th, and that the board permit the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for that event.
Relatively routine, any questions, comments?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Eastern Alliance Insurance Group's application to utilize and provide traffic on Spooky Nook Road for their 5K on Saturday, November 8th, 2025, and authorize the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form?
So moved.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five to zero, thank you. The redevelopment assistance capital program, known as RCAP, Ms. White, sir?
So the township entered into a contract with GSL Consulting, which is a firm that seeks grant funding and then aids in obtaining those funds. They have informed us that the RCAP is, the application period is open. It's something that the governor opens up, it's a bond issue through the state. The application has been prepared, and we've had conversations with GSL. They feel that the application period will close on the 23rd, and that we might even hear by the end of the year if the awards are made, but it could take up to 10 months. So what you have before you is simply a motion that indicates that you desire to submit the application. The application is for $3 million. There is a 50% match. We are looking at the land as, as equity for that, but there will eventually need to be a loan procured if everything plays out with the $3 million. But that's a process that's probably sometime in 2026 or even 2027.
We've been talking about the park for a while, this is nothing new. Any comments or questions from the board?
It's just the next step in the process, really, and, you know, where this is going to be the first of many, I'm sure, grant applications that we make for the development of the park. So, you know, I, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Yes, yeah, and I agree.
Any comments or questions from the audience on this? Any from Zoom?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize GSM Consulting to submit the RACP application for $3 million in funding requests for the Knoll Church Park project?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Up next, we have the items under old business, that we've been talking about, fire, emergency service, and the rising costs, that's been affecting, that will be affecting our budget, and then also the 250th anniversary thoughts for the celebration next year. Do we have any comments, or anything that we want to add to those discussion items here tonight?
Yes, okay. On the second item, the 250th anniversary of the United States, a previous meeting, we determined to assign that to the Parks and Recreation Committee. We met last week, and I think, or Cindy may cover this in her report a little bit, too. But our plan at that time was to develop a committee to work on that event. It probably would occur the week before school starts next summer, and we've already been collecting ideas, and we would like to invite people from the community who are interested in being part of developing that event, to meet at, on October 1st, which is two Wednesdays from today, at 5:30 in this building, in this room. And we'll try to put together a committee and start developing ideas for next summer. What did I miss, Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, we have, we have some preliminary ideas, obviously, but most importantly, we want input from the community on this, and so far, so good, I think. Get this off and going on a good foot, and October 1st is just before the board meeting, so be a good time to get people here. Thank you.
Anything else under old business? New business? We have park naming discussion. I see here.
Oh, or doesn't matter?
Well, we're, we're at the point where I think we want, I don't want to, didn't want to step on you there. I think we're at the point where we want to take a look at a name other than Knoll Road Park. We've, so far, we've come up with four names that are, that are listed here, that, that we like. We'd also like some input from the community if they would like something else. For the most part, we think this is a, a decision that the, that the board should be making, but we do want input from the community.
Yes, and then at our Parks and Rec meeting last week, we talked about the process of how we will name this. And so there's four possible names that we came up with, and they are Four Seasons Park, second, Indian Springs Park, third, Knoll Road Park, and fourth is Supervisors Park. And our process would be then, next, next week, next meeting, I should say, October 1st meeting, we would solicit input from the community, and then the five supervisors would rank these four names, or any other names that we come up with at that meeting, and then pick the top two, and then vote amongst us five to determine what the name of the park will be. I'm sure that was pretty confusing.
Idea to throw by you guys, but I want to do it privately. I have an idea to throw here, but I want to do it privately.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with all, all four names, so.
Okay. Be transparent, really, in what's going on with everyone.
Yeah, and I'm fine with the process. So essentially for the public, if they want, if they have a name, email staff or come next week and present that during the public comment period, correct? Okay. Sounds good. All right. Any questions or comments about that tonight? Okay. Up next, we have our public comment period. Any public comment tonight? Okay, we have two. Yes, sir.
Hello, guys. I'm JT Clevenger, 2696 Harrisburg Pike. I live in the Fawnwood Development, which is right across from, from the Brookside Development. And I had the unfortunate thing to attend our meeting this weekend. And unfortunately, I got assigned the job of coming here and asking some questions and giving you some concerns from, from our HOA, which is 20 houses that sit on a hill above Brookside. They wanted to remind you that, well, and reminded me too, that back in April of 2019, when that area was rezoned, it was rezoned from Ag Harding to campus and enterprise. They were reminded me, and I had remembered this, that I believe it was Chairman Brubaker at the time. Could have been Mr. LaFevre. He's Fever. He's up there, I see on Zoom. And I know, I know Mr. Bennett was there. That was the ones that were still, still there at the time. And I think you were at that one, Mr. Wigglesworth. That was when it was rezoned. And anyway, Mr. Brubaker said that was the best zoning we could expect because we were going to have no residents, no children coming to school, and a good tax base. Because the campus zone is a non-residence zone. Now, later on, like it was then September of that year, the master plan for that was presented. Mr. O'Brien presented it, explained that it was a hospital on the one side. And there was going to be the convenience store. At that time, a fast food restaurant is what they thought. Three medical buildings, or whatever we want to call them, and a senior care facility that was going to be 100, 100-room facility, I guess, that was four stories high. So that's what we had expected was going to be over there. And of course, it's been a long time since that's passed. There hasn't been a new master plan, by the way, presented. And I appreciate that, that Mr. Sturgis has communicated with me on some of this stuff and given me some of the answers. He doesn't have all of them because there is no new master plan and it's a year late, I'm told. Supposed to redo it every five years and hadn't been redone. So with all the construction, or at least the land prep going on over there right now, there's a lot of questions on, to me and others that have been involved with what's going in. I do know that, you know, a couple of weeks ago, there were townhouses that you all approved to go in the, I guess that was phase eight, and phase eight was not even part of the original master plan. I think that was added a couple of years later. I think Mr. O'Brien had bought that. And then it's phase five, I guess, that had now, instead of including this retirement home, which I call a retirement home, it's a, it's a senior home, senior care home, because Oakleaf Manor, that Oakleaf Manor was going to have a soft tie to that and probably run it. And we at that time thought that was the primary permitted building in that side, on the east side. The hospital, obviously, was the primary permitted building on the other side. And apparently it wasn't, although we don't know for sure what happened. But I know you all granted the fact that it is now an accessory building to whatever. We're not sure what. But it's an accessory building and it can now be 60-foot tall, which allows it to be five stories and 150 apartments. So now we've got 150 apartments and 16 townhouses in a campus zone that's not supposed to have any residents permitted other than as accessories. And I did a lot of work on figuring out what accessories are because there's a lot of discussion about what an accessory is. And really, the best I can find when they use it in ordinances and stuff like that, it's, it's a use that is, is a native, customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. So the principal use on the west side is the hospital, obviously. If that is the total principal use, then what we're looking at at this side are buildings that would be accessories to the hospital. If in fact, I've heard from two people and Mr. Sturgis also had let me know that he thought that the, the medical buildings were now going to be the permitted use in there and the other buildings would be accessories to it. But if you look at this, the biggest building is the apartment, 150 apartments, of which we weren't expecting anything like that. And that, that's requires 30 acres in a campus zone. Five, five residents per acre. So I don't know if they got 30 acres or not. I haven't even looked. But I know they're plowing the dirt and they're moving on. So I guess my question is, the sooner we find out what is going in over there, the more comfortable or uncomfortable we will be. And we're not real comfortable with all the residents going in. And I'm surprised you all would be too. You know, no, but I shouldn't say that. Nobody wants more kids. That's not what we want to say. But it, it would have been less traffic with the retirement, with the senior home, less traffic, less parking, less everything. And I would, it is a business zone. We expected it to be more businesses. And this is one of the problems when you have the primary use not owning all the land. All the other campus facilities or campus zones in our district and in Mannheim district are owned by the primary user. And of course, if they want an accessory building, Lancaster General Medical in here has an accessory building, which is a surgical center to the side. There are a number of things like that that go on. I happened to be at the hospital today getting a procedure done. And I asked the girl, I said, if you had your choice, what could you, what would you like to have over there? And she plainly said, real quick, she wants a sandwich shop. She said, cafe at the, at the new hospital isn't very good. Not very good. So the sooner we get that master plan, or at least something, we'll know a little bit more about what's happening here. But we're, we're really not very happy with all the residents going in there in 150 apartment complex. I will say one other thing while I'm here. I was hoping there was going to be a traffic thing today, but there wasn't. And I know Mr. Wigglesworth had pushed for this too, was a better bike lane in that area of Harrisburg Pike. Harrisburg Pike, from the post office up here to here, that's the narrowest point going right through that area, the narrowest point. And of course, the developer begged out of putting a walkway up by the pike. He begged off by saying it was too sloped, I guess. Well, if you look what he's doing today, it's not too sloped because he's coming straight into the road, down 20 feet to get his parking places in. He's using every last inch. But regardless, we ought to be pushing maybe to get the shoulder wider on Harrisburg Pike on that side. We're getting a lot of bikes. The electric bike thing is really catching on. And we're getting a lot of bikes going up and down the road. And that, there is no shoulder to speak of on my side. And on that side, we could, there's room for at least two foot more. It is not a big one, but a little bit more to help people in there because we're not getting the walkway. So I don't know what you have to do to get the state to do that. Then there's one other thing. At the end of the road, where Harrisburg Pike turns into State Road, the original plan had a pork chop there to make the right turn from Harrisburg Pike heading west on the State Road going north. It was going to be a yield. And you just come up and yield and go through like, like it is at Yellow Goose and also down at the road by, by Sheeps. What's happening now is everybody comes up in that turn lane and it is a turn on, you can turn on red. You've got to creep through there probably two car lengths to be able to see up Centerville Road. So everybody's creeping up there and creeping up and getting out. The lane's all there on State Road, just didn't, they didn't finish that for some reason. I'm not sure why. So that's all I have. Like I said, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Sturgis got back to me on a number of questions real quick. But he didn't have the answers to a couple of them.
Mr. Clevenger, those specific questions, are you able to, have you emailed them to Mr. Sturgis, the ones you had tonight already? The ones you just brought up now about the pork chop and?
No, I didn't mention any of the road things.
Okay.
I didn't mention that. I have mentioned the shoulder.
So if, if you could put together just an email for the things that you mentioned tonight. And again, I apologize. I wanted to get back to you before our meeting today and I didn't do it. But I would like to get with Mr. Sturgis and get back to you. You do raise some good points. And I don't want to ignore you. I would like to get back to you and get you, you know, some good answers. And, and, you know, maybe not the answers you want to hear, but at least answers, right? At least answers.
They've been along pretty far. That's the problem. It's always. And, and you know, I know, I know the developer and I know you all know him well. He actually presented, came up to present the program to us at the beginning. And he didn't mention anything about 150-unit apartment complex.
And, and that did change over the years. And, you know, we're not thrilled with that change either. It did happen a while back. I'm not sure how many years ago that.
If you notice, we've had six changes to the campus ordinance since he started that thing. I often wonder if it isn't zoned improperly. I mean, it's, it's going to be a mixed use the way it's headed, whatever that means, but it's going to be a mixed use. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Mike Zuber. I live at 3299 Randy Road. First off, I'd like to thank everybody in the township, their employees, the police department. You're doing a great job for our community, so I thank you for that. I don't know if you can help me or direct me to whom I need to speak to. I have a few things I'd like to ask. One of the things is who is responsible for the railroad crossing on Running Pump Road? It's been deplorable for 10 years. They might patch it once in a while, but it's nothing like the railroad crossing on Marietta or Centerville. That's one of my questions. The other question is, where I live, we have young kids on these electric bikes that are doing 30 miles an hour, no helmets, they're under 16. They have no concept of the rules of the road. They're on their iPhones while they're riding these things. And it's kind of dangerous, but that's, that's my other concern. My wife, Chris Hausner, would like to know if the township has anything or any, I don't know how to phrase it, options for feral cats. Those are my questions, so I thank you.
So the electric bike is, do we have anybody from the police department on tonight?
She's, no, we don't. She's aware and fully aware, the officer fully aware. They're monitoring it. I mean, they're basically legal. They're not safe.
One other thing, excuse me.
Doing safe, but.
I would really like to see more of a police presence in our neighborhood. I mean, I've been there 15, 17 years. And now granted, I'm not sitting outside looking all the time, but I have only seen three cruisers go by in that time.
Is there a specific problem that you have in the neighborhood that?
No, it's just that, you know, it's nice to see a cruiser go by once in a while. I've seen, my neighbor now is a firefighter and I see a fire truck come by more often than a police cruiser. Thank you.
One, one thing real quick. I, I share your concern about the, the electric bikes and scooters. I think that every day that goes by, I see more and more of them out there. And I am concerned about the speed. I recognize that there's not a great deal that we can do right now with, with the issue on a township level. But I would like to approach our representative, Mr. Miller, about this and see if, see if there's any plans. And I, and I don't know, I don't know what, what that concern develops into. But these are motor vehicles and, and I just don't want anything tragic happening to the children out there. And very concerned about it.
My last comment, sorry, is that in the evening, they are riding on the golf course. How you're going to deal with that, I don't know.
Well, on the golf course.
On the golf course at nighttime.
Well, I can, I can deal with that.
Going to set some booby traps.
The railroad crossing, I'm sure Perry has a comment on that one. Because I know that he has been after them for quite some time.
Yes, I, I've contacted several different representatives from Norfolk Southern. And it seems like every time I call back, the number that I call is no longer in service and I have to find another person to call. We have been patching some of the potholes. But actually Norfolk Southern doesn't really like us, you know, working in their, their rail area. But I do have some other numbers since we've done the, the Centerville Road project and I'm, I'm working on that to try to get this crossing redone. It was supposedly in their budget about three to four years ago and then somehow it disappeared. So I'm working on it. That's all I can say.
Perry, I'm dealing with Norfolk Southern and Penn Township and Auction Road. I'll give you some contacts.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
I got their maintenance people.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we have one answer for you, Norfolk Southern, and we're trying to work on that. Feral cat issue.
Not going to touch that one. It's very difficult. I mean, there are programs out there that agencies manage. But for a township to run that program, it's, it's not feasible, not with the staffing we have.
Can residents call SPCA?
Probably could. I don't know that they have a feral cat.
I guess that would be my recommendation at this point.
Because we have Zoom participants, can you go to the mic, please?
We are working with an organization, but this is the first time in 17 years we've had a feral cat problem. A mother came, a mother cat came to our house. I felt sorry for her. She was soaking wet when we had all that rain. And like two weeks later, she shows up with five kittens. Now, my wife and I have spent the time and the money to have them all neutered. But like Columbia has, has a program. I, I think there's other townships that have programs. But I didn't know if, Chris wanted to know if Eve Samfield had anything like that, but it's fine if you don't. But yeah, you know, it's a shame that, I guess renters come in and they leave and they leave their pets behind.
So you had mentioned Columbia has a program. Is, are you able to get the, the basics of that program and get it to us?
All, and all I can tell you is you must be a resident of Columbia in order for them to help you.
Do you know what they do and how they do it?
They neuter the cats. You bring them in, they neuter the cats. Chris and I have to take these cats to York. It's a trap. It's a trap, neuter-trap-release, or trap-neuter-release. They must bring them back to where they were caught. It's $25 to have them neutered. And it's a nice organization, but we just were curious to know if you had any, anything like that.
It would appear that Columbia's program is called CAT, and it is the Cat Action Team. And it is a volunteer organization run alongside the borough, who then runs a registration program for residents who are dealing with feral cats. And it is the same. It is a trap-neuter-and-release program run by a volunteer organization.
But that's it. Again, I thank you all for your hard work and diligence.
Any other public comment? Okay, any from Zoom? Managers report.
Diane did attend the final construction project meeting for Centerville Road today. They are down to five items on their punch list. And they are working on a dedication ceremony towards the end of October, beginning of November. And we'll get dates and times out to you as soon as we know. Route 72 and Lititz Road, the temporary signal is up and running. It was activated 9/4. Haven't heard any negative comments. So hopefully, that's going to work for us for the next few years until PennDOT decides what they want it to do. The Noldorot Park, of course, is closed until mid-November. We were out there this morning. It looks great. The playground is in place. Everything is roped off. We do have to build the pavilion yet. That is coming late in October. And then we're going to fully cure the macadam. So we should have a mid-November opening on that. The Recreation Authority Pro Shop project, they have decided to go with a smaller project at 1.67 mil. They are reaching out to the three financial consultants and getting cost estimates. And they should be discussing that further at their meeting next week. The manhole cover issue that Mr. Gerke mentioned, you did receive the report. I did email that to him, and he thanked us for receiving that. The DEP MS4 evaluation, the EPA audit, no, sorry, DEP. We did have that evaluation. It went very successfully. We passed with flying colors, so that's over with. I do want to note that I will be on vacation next week, returning on the 30th. We did talk about the Park and Rec Group. I did want to also announce that we are going to have our first budget meeting October 21st at 4:30 here at the township. Includes a report unless there's questions.
Any questions from the managers report?
No.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:55. Thank you.